Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. Select Board meeting for Bennington on Monday, May 23rd. Really happy to see everybody. As always, we have a lot of topics on our agenda. So, I am Jeanne Jenkins. I chair this board, and I'd like other board members to introduce themselves, starting with Garrett.
I'm Garrett Gordon. Tom Hilly, thanks for being here.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Jean Connor, thank you for being here as well.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Good evening, I hope everybody's had a lovely day. Bruce Lee Clark.
Wonderful. And also with us tonight, we have our town manager, Stu Hurd. We have Nancy Lively taking minutes. And Jim Vires on the Cat TV camera. Excellent, lovely. And so let's start tonight like we always start. Jim, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. The Pledge of Allegiance is in the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And now Jeanne, would you please read our town's vision that guides all our work?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up is our consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, in a second. Any discussion, any questions or comments for Nancy or for Stu?
I have one, one small one. Line 72, there's a missing E and a word B. Will just be, um, no, kind of small.
Impressive. Wow. All right. All right, anything else? All right, and then we have two liquor licenses that are first-time licenses, which you all need to sign, right?
That's correct.
Which is wonderful as well. All right, so any other discussion? Nope? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any extensions? Tom, are you abstaining or not?
I abstain.
You aye? Okay, all right. All right, so good. Thank you very much. All right, and then let's next move into public hearing on updates to the TIF District Substantial Change Extension. And it looks like Dan's leading us off with Stephanie Clark from Whiteenburg here with us on the big screen. Hello.
So I'll just kick us off quickly. Stephanie has all the knowledge and has a brief presentation for you folks. Just a little history, just to remind everybody while we're here. As you know, Bennington was approved for a tax-incomethrough financing district several years ago, and we are now ceding what's called a substantial change from the Vermont Economic Progress Council to allow us to extend that tax-incomethrough financing district. I'll let Stephanie talk about the specifics. We were here before you a few weeks ago to get approval for that, for the substantial change. They were sent up to BEPC, they had some questions, some additional information that they requested. Stephanie worked to support that, to supply that information, and we did a quick review today of the minor changes that were made. And I'll let Stephanie proceed from there. Just by way of introduction, Stephanie Clark is with the firm of Whiteburg. She's up there in the big city of Burlington. And she's been working with us since the beginning on this TIF. She knows all about Bennington and all about TIF, so I'm going to let Stephanie take it away.
Thanks, Dan. And just to check, confirm, I'm really in trouble.
Yes.
Super. I may not be able to hear you perfectly, as we discovered during our sound check. Just we do need to do some relay message in case I don't hear you. That's just, that's the reason is, I'm actually, I'm actually listening. Trying to listen, just can't always hear her in the room. But thank you again for meeting on this topic. As Dan said, I'm with the firm of Whiteburg, and we have been involved in Bennington since 2017 when we first developed the TIF district there. And we are back for you tonight on a substantial change and then request to the state, the Vermont Economic Progress Council. I'm going to give another quick one-on-one on what is TIF for anyone who is unfamiliar or would like a refresher. I'm going to talk through why we're here, to see you again, for what the updates are, and then take any questions. So, TIF is an economic development tool that a municipality can use to revitalize a particular area of your town to incentivize private development by investing in infrastructure. And the way it works is the town designates an area, invests in infrastructure within that area that is preventing development from proceeding. And the development that occurs as a result of that infrastructure generates new tax dollars on its new value. And those tax dollars, the increment, go to pay down the debt service on the municipal infrastructure. That's the long and short of it. The key is that the state's portion of the tax, the education fund, 70% of those taxes, are designated to repay that increment. They go into the TIF fund, as well as the, in this case, 100% of the municipal portion of the TIF, of the taxes. And so because of the state coupon, we have to get approval from the state from Vermont Economic Progress Council, otherwise that is BEPC. So, we did get the approval for the district in 2017, but the first debt must be incurred within the first five years to be able to continue using your district. And since we did not do that for a multitude of reasons, not least of which was the pandemic, we had to apply for an extension. And so the extension occurred by March 31st, 2022. And if we get approval to extend the full amount we're asking for, which is five years, they must incur that first debt by 2027, we're asking for that five-year extension. If we get approval to have first debt incurred over sometime in the next five years, we then have until 2029 to fully do all of the work. And that is because initially you were given a 10-year debt repayment window, but the legislature extended that by one year, twice, so two years total because of pandemic. And once you have incurred your first debt, you have 20 years to retain that increment discussed that helps to repay down the debt service. So that's the big picture, that's why we're here. We were last in front of you, actually, in March, March 7th, and we submitted our updated materials, the required updated summary and the work book. And as Dan mentioned, we had a lot of back and forth. They had questions, they had some additional things for us to consider in what we should include in our TIF district plan update. And so we did some back and forth in April and updated our materials and sent them in. And we met with them, with BEPC, on April 28th, where we discussed the changes, we discussed the overall plan. And they needed us to return to the select board to codify those changes. And I didn't get to know what those changes are, between what we saw in March and what we're seeing now. But this is, we consider it a master TIF. And what that means is that they will, we're asking for the board as a master TIF, to re-operas as a master TIF, because we will have more information on each project as time goes on. And with a master TIF, you come back with phased timelines when you have more information, where you get approval from BEPC on your specific phase of infrastructure and known background. Tonight, we're asking for approval of this updated plan. We are not at all asking for authorization of any debt at this time. That will need to occur after we've got a phased filing with BEPC and after we've got fully developed plans that will then go before you to go to voters. So what are we asking for tonight? Approval of these changes, the updated TIF plan summary? We, since you saw us in March, we've updated the plan summary to discuss more about the brownfields and the housing and Bennington High project. They got some further questions, they wanted that baked into our description so that we were very clear in the materials. They also raised some questions around the cost estimates for three of our five projects. The five projects included Ben High, Putnam Rock, Catamount School, Drysdale Building, and the 120 Depot Street. You might recall, and then from all five, we go back in March. For Catamount, Drysdale, and Depot Street, we did not update our infrastructure estimates because those are various elements changed between now and when we go to construct. But we used calculation, we worked with the department, to update those estimates. And we updated the estimates and looked for other sources of funding that might be available or aware of now or who might not have been aware of before. And so the public investment is now estimated at $3.6 million. And we updated the assessed values for all three of those projects as well, which resulted in a $13 million estimate for assessed value of the new projects, all five projects. So we have not changed anything since you asked us about the projects themselves, or the project criteria, or the purpose of viability of this district. We've updated the financing plan and some of the summary language. So where are we now? We will meet with you tonight. If you have a positive decision to approve, these materials, we'll submit those before the end of the week, most likely Wednesday. We will then incur, that will set us up to be heard by the select board, sorry, by the board, BEPC board, on June 30th. And meanwhile, the projects themselves are being worked on by the town and are being investigated, all of the infrastructure that's needed, and putting together public-private partnerships. That has to be an ongoing effort with the intent that we could go to bond next year and incur that debt within the five that we're talking about, that we need to get approval for. But we're hopeful that once we got that authorization, we can proceed to then go through a bond vote next year. So, Jeanne, do you have any questions for me? All the materials will be on the website, which is the said, the plan summary and the work book update. Great. Any questions from the select board? Seeing none. Any questions from the public? Nancy, please, come on up.
Nancy White, Bennington? People of Bennington have been paying for experts to work on the plans for the TIF district for seven years. I don't ever remember any select board getting an expert in here to talk about those plans. Now, I've been looking at them online, and I think they've been online for five years. We have to vote to approve a TIF district before you can do any of this. Isn't that correct for the Ben High?
Dan, would you like to respond?
I can answer that, sure, Stephanie, too. We can vote, we have to vote the town has to vote to agree debt. There's no vote on the TIF.
I've been trying to get answers about the Ben High for a year and a half at your public televised meetings. In January, at your public televised budget meeting, I asked for an update on the Ben High. Jeanne, you said it's a privately owned building. The town can't tell the man what to do with the building. Well, it's pretty clear the town has been very involved, both with the building owner and Shire's housing to work on the Ben High. The contract that you signed, that we don't even know what we're going to be paying for for the next 30 years, I don't know how you could do that without voter approval. Clearly, you must have known all this before town meeting. Why didn't you explain to us then to see if you had the support of the voters? Originally, all we were supposed to be worried about at the Ben High was the parking lot. Now it's the gym and the addition. And I think I read the memo today, is it $4.1 million just for the gym and the addition?
That's what I said, yes.
Again.
Dan, do you want to speak to any of this in terms of how the contract, where we are in the Ben High contract?
We've discussed this many times in the past.
I know, we have.
We have a lease option on the building. We are full, we occupy the property now, we maintain the property now. We have a right to purchase it at any time. Or we can simply lease it for 30 years and then it will become ours at the end of that 30-year term. We also have a right to cease leasing it at any time within that 30 years. So, we are in the feasibility stage. We will be back to the select board, I'll talk about this in my update in more detail. We will be back to the select board once we return our feasibility analysis with the firm of Goldson Architecture. And at that point, you folks will tell the staff whether you want to proceed or not. So that's what I said.
So Nancy, we have a TIF expert here tonight. So if you have questions on this TIF extension, please address, please address that.
Sure. In the other towns that you've worked with, have the town officials dragged their citizens into a project where we've never been told the cost, we never were told the timeline, and I don't even know where this money is going to come from at the local level just for the next 18 months, where I'm reading the town is going to take on all the costs? Is this normal of how other towns do it? They keep their citizens in the dark?
Stephanie, I believe that question is addressed to you. I don't know if you can hear us clearly.
Just can we speak to that?
Okay.
Yes, I can absolutely speak to that. Every town goes through this process, which is to establish your district and the parameters of your district. Your individual projects will have future meetings with select board when there's an actual construction cost for a bond vote and a known relationship with your public, with your private partner, in the public-private partnership. And those meetings are where the project details, such as costs and the design plans are unveiled and discussed, and there is a public process associated with that. In every community I've worked, you set up the district, and you work on the projects, and then you come back to the public, and you come back to the select board or city council and talk about those individual projects as they are developed. That's my experience.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions on this TIF proposal? No?
If not, I would request, who would request that the select board make a motion to approve the TIF plan update? Is that accurate, Stephanie?
Yes, it's to approve the submission of these revised materials, to adopt them and to approve their submission to the state.
Great, do I have such a motion?
I have a little bit, second.
Great. Any more discussion of the board? No? All right, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any extensions? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, next up, we have public comment. So I only have one person signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to sign up for public comment? Please raise your hand if so. No? All right, then Michael Keane, you are up.
Hi. Well, good evening, I'm Michael Keane. I live in North Bennington. I'm not going to be talking about TIF tonight, I'm going to wait till after 5:27. I am currently president of the board at the Center for Communication and Medicine and its Speak Sooner program here in Bennington. I wanted to inform everyone about an event we have going on tomorrow evening, May 24th, starting at 6:00 PM. Speak Sooner, speaksooner.org is going to offer a community education program entitled, Comfort or Conflict in End-of-Life Care? A discussion about what's missing in something called Advanced Directives, which many of you may know about. The event is free and open to the public. You may register at speaksooner.org, and you may join us in person at the Bennington Performing Arts Center, or you may join us online, whichever you wish. The event includes a documentary called Prognosis: Notes on Living. It will also include a panel discussion and a Q&amp;A session. Now, in recent years, there have been initiatives urging people to complete and file an advanced directive. Now that, for those of you that don't know, that's a written statement of your wishes regarding medical treatment. It's made to ensure that your wishes are carried out in the event that you should be unable to communicate with them, with a doctor concerning them, after an accident or some other episode. The film Prognosis: Notes on Living is an award-winning film, and it gives a valuable example of how end-of-life care can look. The film will be the springboard for our panel discussion, and will offer a number of perspectives on the critical conversations about what happens toward the end of life. So why is this interesting? Why is it important to all of us, to you, to Jim Vires, to Stu, to all of you, to me? Now, it's interesting and it's important because nobody gets out of this life alive. Thank you, please join us.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is...
Can I have a question?
I'm sorry. Next up is Health Equity Initiatives with Megan Harrington and Rory Price from the Department of Health. And we're really happy and excited to have them here. Health equity is really important to us in terms of the town vision and also in terms of action steps for the Declaration of Inclusion. So this is really an honor, thank you.
Well, thank you. Hi, I'm Rory Price. I live in Bennington, and I'm also the Chronic Seeds Program Specialist within the Bennington Office of Local Health of the Vermont Department of Health. And so as Jeanne mentioned, I'm here tonight to talk about health equity in Bennington. And I'd just like to start by thanking you for having me. You're an approachable board that's really invested in this, and that makes this a whole lot easier.
Rory, you need to speak really close to the microphone.
Like that?
I'm really sorry.
Okay. So I'll try to keep my remarks relatively brief to save room for questions and comments afterward, but I do feel very passionately about this, so I tend to draw it on a little bit. So feel free to interject any questions that you have as they arise. So I'll start by sharing a quick agenda for my time. First, I'll just kind of contextualize what do I mean by health equity and why should we care? I'll talk about health inequities that we see within the town of Bennington. I'll talk about some of the town's projects and how they relate to health equity, the role and activities of our office, of the Bennington District Office of the Department of Health, and then we have time, time for questions and comments. So first, I wanted to just kind of define what I mean by health equity. And we know that health doesn't just start and end within a doctor's office or a hospital. It really starts long before illness in our homes, our schools, our jobs, and our community. So sometimes the conversation around health equity kind of stops at like the prevention point. So what are individuals doing for their own health? What decisions are they making about their personal diet, tobacco use, physical activity, et cetera? And so you might hear people blame different health outcomes on things like lack of self-discipline, culture, or just ignorance. But what happens when you just place someone's health outcomes on their individual decisions is that you remove them from the context within which they operate and where they have the opportunity or not to make decisions that improve their health. And so this is what we mean when we talk about health equity. We say that everyone should have the opportunity to make the choices that allow them to live a long, healthy life, regardless of their income, education, ethnic background, or any other characteristic. So this is kind of a visioning statement. We haven't achieved this yet in Bennington, in Vermont, in New England, in the U.S., or in the world. Data shows time and time again that people of color, individuals who identify as LGBTQ, individuals surviving on less than a living wage, and those with disabilities are not able to make the choices that allow them to be healthy. So let's take a look at what this looks like locally. County Health Rankings is a program of the University of Wisconsin Population Health Institute. Annually, they use a myriad of data to kind of rank the health of nearly every county within all 50 states. This is a well-established, well-respected method of identifying differences in health within a state at the county level. Unfortunately, Bennington County typically ranks as last or second to last in the state in terms of health outcomes. This year, we were 13th out of 14. This ranking looks at length of life, including premature death and life expectancy, as well as quality of life, including premature birth weight and overall physical and mental health. So data is frequently available at this, the county level, but there is a way for us to look more closely at what's happening within our own town of Bennington. So that's Bennington County, which I think that you all know. The county is subdivided into census tracts at each census. So these are subdivisions of the county, and they provide an opportunity to look at data points within a smaller region than just the county level. When you look at data at the county level, it can mask intra-county differences in opportunity and outcomes. So for example, if one portion of the county is doing like super well in something and one portion is doing not so well, if you just look at the county level, it just looks average. And you kind of lose that granular look at what's happening within the county. So tonight, we're going to focus on these four census tracts, which cover the town of Bennington. And this is a zoomed-in look at those four census tracts. And we'll start by taking a look at the life expectancy within each. So in the western part of town where I live, the life expectancy is close to 85 years. And that's really incredible. State life expectancy is 80 years. So the folks in this side of town in aggregate are living longer than we would expect them, which is great. But when we look to the northeastern portion of town, the life expectancy drops to 73.5 years, which is certainly lower than the state and much lower than the western portion of Bennington. And here are the life expectancies for the other tracts. So I want to take a moment just to illustrate out of the context of a map what this looks like. This is a photo that I took in Willow Park. Willow Park is in that northeastern census tract with a life expectancy of 73.5 years. The monument is in the westernmost census tract with a life expectancy of over 84 years. The monument is only 2.5 miles away from Willow Park, but when you stand and take in this beautiful view, you're not only looking across that short distance of 2.5 miles, you're seeing across the gap in health and years of life. And so these differences in life expectancy and health outcomes that contribute to early mortality, you can't just attribute them to genetics, or luck of the draw, or accident. These differences in health outcomes are preventable, and they reflect systems that are not working for everyone. So I challenge you to kind of sit with this for a second and think of some of the systems-level issues that might be leading to this difference in life expectancy outside of anyone's individual behavior. And I'm going to show a little bit more data. So this is the prevalence of adult type 2 diabetes in the western portion of Bennington, 6.9%. And it is 10.5% in the northeastern portion of town, slightly lower but still elevated in the other two tracts. Similarly, if you look at adult obesity, the map colors do not change. And if you look at the prevalence of adults who routinely smoke, again, the map colors do not change. So I'm going to ask that we kind of stretch our thinking here again. We know, and the people who smoke know, that this is what public health professionals call a risky behavior. Again, that's super focused on the individual and their personal choices. It's probably not a stretch to think about the targeted marketing that cigarette companies have used, the proximity of stores selling cigarette products, as kind of environmental and social factors that might explain some of these differences in smoking behavior. But it's also really essential to understand that many health outcomes have absolutely nothing to do with the choices that an individual can make. Take median income, shown here. The connection between health and wealth is proven and enduring, and we see huge disparities in income. People don't typically get the opportunity to set their own wages, so this is kind of outside of their, the purview of their individual choice. But why talk about median income instead of just those living under the federal poverty level? Aren't those the only people who are struggling? As a reminder, the federal poverty level is $13,590 a year for an individual. In Bennington County, the average salary for an individual just to meet basic needs is $34,000. And that's also more than Vermont's current minimum wage. That means if we only speak about people in poverty in our community or generational poverty, you're not going to be talking about the vast numbers of people who are income-constrained, asset-limited, and likely working 40 or more hours. who are income-constrained, asset-limited, and likely working 40 or more hours per week. And that's a look at children under the federal poverty level. And I want to emphasize that I'm absolutely not making a commentary on lives and experiences and aspirations and abilities of those who live in our town, particularly those who live in the northeastern portion of Bennington. The current economic landscape in terms of wages, benefits, childcare, long-enduring systemic racism and bigotry, and other institutional factors have sharply narrowed the ability of people not only to make a living wage but to accumulate any assets, including homes and vehicles. What about the mentality of bootstraps? Kind of pick yourself up by your bootstraps, everyone should forge ahead, pursue an education, find a good job, work long hours, buy a house, and just be upwardly economically mobile through hard work and grit? There is data to show how this has played out locally. A study has looked at the income of people based on where they were born, regardless of where they live now. So this shows the income at age 35 of people who were born in Bennington 35 years ago. What about if you just look at the youth who grew up and stayed within their home tract? What does household income look like for those people who have stayed and worked in their community from birth to age 35? Again, this is not a commentary on any individuals. This is a show that our current system does not promote or sometimes even allow economic mobility. There is, for example, a benefits cliff. If you start to make too much when receiving a raise, you start to lose subsidies at a rate that cancel out the benefit that you got for receiving that additional income. Childcare is currently close to 27% of the average income. When you add that to the cost of gas, you can lose a third of your income just by showing up to work every day. These are systemic issues that hold people in situations that are not ideal. And so there is no wonder that we see inequities in mental distress or physical distress or risk behaviors or life expectancy. And I've just given a really quick and probably way over simplified example of health inequities that are place-based, because we were looking at maps at census tracts. I'm sure that you've heard of population-based health inequities. You've probably heard that the COVID pandemic highlighted or shined a spotlight on these differences in health outcomes. You maybe saw that there were higher rates of COVID-19 infection and hospitalization among people of color. Maybe you've heard that Vermonters with a disability are more likely to have lung disease, cancer, cardiovascular disease, or diabetes than individuals without a disability. Or you may have heard that Bennington LGBT youth are more likely to have tried to kill themselves than heterosexual youth. The statistics are really shocking, they're discomforting. And research has shown that when people like me highlight these differences, they do little to persuade most people to think about systems. It can instead give fodder to double down on dangerous views about work ethic, behaviors, and deservedness of populations along racial, ethnic, and other lines. And so I don't want to draw it on about data and maybe more shocking statistics, although there's no shortage. I want to kind of talk about the bookends of those data points. How did we get here and where do we go from here? So the text on this is a little small, so I'm sorry. This is kind of a metaphor for the root causes of poor health. So if you look at that scraggly little tree on the left, you can see that institutional issues like racism, marketing for tobacco and alcohol, and poverty are all within the roots of the trees, the roots of the tree. These are amplified by the things listed on the trunk. That includes restricted power, disconnected community members, et cetera. Together, the roots in the trunk lead to more observable and measurable outcomes, things like infant mortality, smoking, and heart disease. In the tree on the right, the root causes for good community health are shown. Quality schools, access to healthcare, adequate income are then moderated by sense of community, social support, organizational networks, et cetera. While the outcomes of things like violence, heart disease, and obesity aren't gone, they're not receiving so much fodder from the roots and thus are smaller in the context of a much more thriving and healthy community. Luckily for us, some of the work of the Select Board and others in our towns are starting to get in those deep-rooted causes of health inequities and poor health outcomes. Your work with the Town Vision and everything under it, it's a wonderful example. Another example is the redevelopment of the Bennington High Building. The provision of affordable housing and the space for multi-generational socialization is something that's been long needed. It will also be revitalizing of vacant property, which on its own, in terms of environmental health, can be linked to positive health outcomes. The proposed skate park is another example, providing affordable or free recreational space for individuals in our community. This is a photo of the bike and pedestrian lane on Dewey Street. This type of environmental modification can make recreational physical activity safer, easier, and more appealing for all. It can also facilitate a better, faster, and safer commute for individuals who don't have vehicular transportation, which is currently one quarter of renters in our community. And finally, there's the beautiful Pocket Park on Main Street. You can see the sign to the left advertising the space as "Smoke Free." The sign is just as much an indicator of the vision and values of our town to protect and promote health as it is to really share any information about a policy. And so now, because I'm not trying to just say what you should do or highlight what you have done, I also want to share just a couple quick things that our office is working on. So I did talk a lot about economics tonight, and we've recently started a fledgling initiative centered on economic dignity. Along with a growing list of community partners, including the VCRC, we are looking to begin to train well-being and dignity within our local economic, labor, and social systems. If we want to get at root causes, this is the type of work that needs to be done. Leveraging a grant from the CDC, we're hoping to change the narrative around the reason behind why a flourishing economy is important, not just growth for growth's sake, but to promote the well-being of the people who participate. Additionally, our office is taking a new look at the process and procedures behind protecting Bennington children from lead exposure, particularly from paint. A number of statewide resources exist, and our full team is turning its attention to addressing this issue holistically in a way that supports area families, renters, homeowners, and landlords. And then finally, we're working with Givix and many others to support the assessment of unsheltered youth in our region and options for increasing public sanitation facilities for those who are experiencing homelessness. I know that Jonah has been an asset to that team and provides the town perspective wonderfully. And so what am I asking of you tonight? I'm hoping that whenever possible, you will leverage health data to support decision-making and priority setting. That can include things like first fixing sidewalks in areas with the lowest rates of physical activity, creating bike lanes in areas with the highest proportion of renters, things like that. Town leadership is also so involved in many of the things happening in the health and public health realm. You don't need my approval, but I really pleased to see that, and I would love to encourage you to continue not only to participate yourself, but to ask organizations for regular updates. That type of accountability and transparency is really critical to a healthy community. You can always contact the Department of Health to think through the potential consequences of policies and other decisions. Even projects that are well-intentioned can sometimes have negative impacts. And exploring those and creating mitigation plans can be important to protecting the most marginalized in our community. And then finally, please consider partnering with the Vermont Department of Health on any of the projects that I've mentioned or any upcoming projects, because we are a really approachable and friendly team, and we are eager to work with you. Public health, as I showed, is not just the result of individual decisions or the work of the people on this screen. All of us contribute to a healthy, inclusive, and welcoming community. As Select Board members, you have this incredible responsibility and privilege to make decisions that can have dramatic impacts on the health of individuals and our community. But you really aren't in this alone, because when you combine your passion for creating a welcoming and inclusive community with our data, and then you mix that, most importantly, with the lived experiences and expertise of our community members, it will help all of us to live in the community that we wish for ourselves, our families, and for our neighbors. So I can see the time, I went way over time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And there's my information if you want to reach out afterward.
Thank you, Rory. That was really lovely. And I'm sure we have Select Board questions, yes. And I'm hoping that there is a way we can put your PowerPoint on the website. I don't know if it needs to go under the packet or if there's another place, but it seems like it's good data for all of us to have. Thank you. All right, Jim, you're up.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. And one of the central questions that I have when you show up those five different areas of Bennington was if you have any information on insurance rates or lack of insurance rates in those areas?
That is a good question. I don't have the rates off the top of my head. Overall, Bennington County is pretty insured. But when you start to look at specific populations or those census tracts, there are disparities and, not to speak out of turn, but I would imagine the rates would reflect the other sort of health outcomes that we were looking at, in that the downtown, northeastern tract do have a higher uninsured rate compared to the southeastern and western part of town.
All right, the next question that I have for you, and I've only got one more after this, is while Bennington is 13 out of 14, up north, what are they doing to have greater health outcomes that we're not doing?
That's a really good question. And I don't know that there's any like one program that they're running that's, you know, phenomenal that can explain the difference in kind of the rankings. Part of the beauty, but then also part of the kind of confusion of those rankings is that it indexes a lot of different variables. So it looks at life expectancy, premature death, overall, you know, sort of self-declared physical and mental health status. So it's this mix of so many things that they use to kind of rank counties. So you can't just address one and kind of rise in the rankings. You have to address all of them. And so what's kind of hard to compare year over year is that everyone's health might be improving as a state, and we're still 13th out of 14, but we're better than where we were in the previous year. So kind of my next step is to look at trends in some of those more specific data lines over years within each county to see who's tackling what and what has it done in terms of their position within the state. I hope that kind of answers your question, is sort of a non-answer, but...
Finally, the last question that I have is, you know, one thing that I know that I've learned over the years is that generally speaking, people who smoke have a lower level of education. However, there are exceptions. I have two degrees and I smoke, which is, you know, I don't know if that doubles down, doubles down on how dumb I am, but... In those five areas in the county, do you have any information on the education levels there?
Um, not off the top of my head, but again, I think it kind of maps onto what the other indicators were in that there's a higher proportion of individuals who didn't graduate high school in the northeastern and downtown portions of town, and a higher proportion of folks who didn't go to college. And it's not, you know, because of personal aptitude. I mean, I think skill and ability is distributed equally, but opportunity isn't. And so the folks who live in those parts of town are not fundamentally unable to learn or to be educated. It's just the kind of systems that we've not, we necessarily in this room, but sort of collectively as a society that we've put in place that has hindered their ability to pursue that.
Thank you.
Good questions. Gary?
The tracts that you show us, how are those developed?
So every year, or every time, excuse me, the census is conducted nationally, and they look at dividing the county into these tracts. And they try to have, I think it's between 1,500 and 6,000 people within each tract. So there's kind of like a comparable number of people within each so that you can do comparisons like I did tonight. That's why they're all shaped kind of weird, sort of jerry-lander to fit that number of people. And they try to keep them relatively stable across censuses so that you can compare it to previous censuses, so you can kind of look at trends over time. So those four have been stable for quite a while. So it's easy to kind of look back and see how we've done, what we have to work on.
Thank you. Rory, you've talked about an effort to explore or deal with lead exposure, particularly from paint. Can you give us just a couple of quick ideas about where you plan to be going in that area?
Sure. So full disclosure, I'm in like my third month at the Department of Health, so if my district director, Megan, wants to try me, she certainly can. But it's kind of a new focus of our office, just understanding that in the year 2022, there's really no reason for any child to be exposed to lead, and there is no safe lead exposure. So kind of looking at our housing stock, the primary source of lead exposure for children is paint. And so there's kind of like this one person at the state level who addresses a lot of these cases and is able to work through them. And so we're offering her support, and then also trying to look at a more preventive, you know, kind of take on things. How can we support landlords, homeowners, who might not know that they have lead paint in their home, and help to address that?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Jean? You've been there three months and you just did that? Wow.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I have two questions, and one may be too long for this visit, and you can cover it at a future meeting, but I'll ask it anyway. And that is, can you share a story of when a community has implemented some sort of initiative program and they had a successful outcome?
Yes. So, you know, I guess I'm going to show my bias a little bit in terms of looking at economic dignity. Really, when we've looked at the data, the sort of economic standing and economic mobility and economic empowerment of people really seems to be sort of at the core of whether or not they're able to live a healthy life. And so there's, with COVID, I think, kind of this renewed effort across the nation to look at that connection between sort of the dignity of folks existing within economic systems and their health outcomes. And so some towns have kind of adopted that as their credo and are starting to put forth things like anti-displacement policies. So how do we make sure that people don't get priced out of areas as we try to develop? Baby bonds are another thing that are really exciting, kind of investing in children as they're born so that when they're 18, they have a small amount of money to go to college with. Something that's interesting about that is just by having a small sum of money in the bank, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, that changes kiddo's view of whether it's possible for them to go to college. So by even just having a few thousand dollars in the bank, it can change the entire trajectory of their life. So some towns are really starting to explore that connection in pretty progressive ways. So there's definitely a lot, a lot of fun things happening that we can learn from.
That's encouraging. And the other question I had has to do with Montpelier. Is Montpelier aware, I'm assuming they are, I'm hoping they are, aware of the disparities in the different counties around the state? And assuming they are aware, are you, are there any initiatives on the state level?
So there's a lot of health equity initiatives taking place at the Vermont Department of Health. There's been sort of a huge hiring of a lot of folks who is going to be their full-time job to incorporate a health equity lens across sort of all divisions. I think, you know, in terms of like legislative action, I think that they have the data, it's just kind of prioritizing, figuring out what will actually make an impact. And that can be hard, hard to kind of sift through.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Yes, Nancy, please come up.
I'm not surprised, looking at the state or the local map, when you look at the state map, that the areas, the counties you're looking at are some of the wealthiest ones in the state. When you look at the map for the town of Bennington, the top right-hand corner, we build and create a tremendous amount of low-income and affordable housing, and that's where it's all concentrated. So that's where you're going to see the higher numbers there. I question that people are being left out of care. For 100 years, our hospital has provided free care. When we ran our own rec center, we were giving between 15,000 and 18,000 free visits a year to people. We paid for a tremendous amount of different parks that people could use for free. Bike paths, you talked about bike paths. Vermont is a world state. Vermonters need their cars, not just to get around for work, but for other things. And I've been trying for three years for officials to talk about where they want to run bike paths in Bennington. It isn't fair. If people wake up one day and find out that the parking mats in front of their home or business for 100 years is gone for bike paths, so I would urge officials to start being honest so that citizens have a chance to talk about where you want to run bike paths in Bennington.
Any other questions?
Can I just speak to a couple of those points really quickly? I think, you know, in terms of our hospital, it has provided really exceptional care for the last 100 years, and I envision them continuing that, and they do have a... pretty generous financial assistance policy. I think that what we see, though, is there's this kind of donut hole of people who aren't able to avail themselves of that policy, but aren't able to fully afford, fully afford care. And I think it extends sort of beyond just healthcare, in terms of some of the other things that I talked about, that influence care. And with bike lanes, I completely agree. I think that's why we don't see them everywhere. There's a lot that goes into kind of making one happen, and the community voice certainly needs to be the leading voice in terms of where they go, where they connect, and sort of what you sacrifice to have them. So I would agree with Nancy on that point.
I will say that we have yearly had wonderful updates on bike paths and walking paths in Bennington, and it is something that the select board, over the last ten years, and I'm aware of, has really prioritized as something very important for health, and the public is always invited to take part in that. And I know, you know, we're almost due for another update from BRCRC in the town on those efforts, so it's quite good. So any other questions from, oh, Susan, please, come up.
I was just wondering if there was a program with, for landlords that are providing statutory housing. I can just recall that there's still lead, but we're renting too. Is there a program that Zappia insists the owners could sign for housing?
That is a really great question. So the Vermont Department of Health on their website has a whole litany of resources and tools available for kind of every different type of person in terms of what they can do about lead. So there's a section for real estate agents in terms of what are the rules and regulations around their work. There's a section for landlords, a section for homeowners, and that's kind of what we see is that it's not, you know, malicious landlords in our area who are purposely exposing children to lead or being, you know, dragging their feet and addressing it. There's some folks who just own an old home and really aren't sure what to do in terms of addressing the lead that's in their home. So I don't have a lot of specific examples, but the website is very comprehensive and has a lot, well, probably a lot more information than anyone wants to look at tonight, but.
Great question. Any other questions, comments? No? Well, then, thank you so much, Lori. That was really, really helpful, and I hope that you will keep us updated. I think, you know, this is a board that I think I can say for all of us that we want to work with you in any ways that you see fit, so please reach out. Thank you. Wonderful. All right, and so next up, we have BBC Work Plans and Budget Presentation with Jenny Dyer.
Doer.
Doer. Dyer.
I don't know.
It took me a long time to learn Jen's name. Okay, wow. Second time I've done that. All right. And so the select board, so Jenny is here to give us the overview on the budget and also talk about work plans, and we approved the BBC's budget, which has been funded through the Downtown Improvement District Assessment that goes to the BBC. So this is a time for us to hear about priorities, needs of the BBC, to ask questions and share our thoughts. This is a really hardworking group, and we are really happy to have Jenny with us.
Hi, thanks for having me. As Jenny said, I'm Jenny Doer, like the Scotch, rhymes with viewer, that's how you say it. Following Lori is a little bit something, since I have never done a PowerPoint presentation before, having gone to college before computers existed. Well, they existed, but you know what I mean. I did a college on a typewriter. Maybe some of you know what that is. So I had been in this position for six months. I had big shoes to fill, as many people told me when I took the position with the departure of John Shanahan. He has been celebrated in many ways, but he's been an unsung hero in a lot of ways too. And one of the things I'd really like to point out is how he helped businesses with their PPPs during COVID. And that was something that wasn't publicized, but he went around and he sometimes built out forms for the businesses with businesses because they didn't know what to do. So I would say that he personally did save some of our businesses from going under. So it works. Okay. As part of twenty-three designated downtowns, the BBC follows the Main Street four-point approach with four working committees. Board members are expected to sit on at least one of these following committees: Organization Design, Economic Vitality, and Promotion. And each committee is chaired by a board member. But anyone in the community that is a member of the BBC can also sit on any of these committees. So if you're interested, please reach out. This is a lot of information, I'm not going through it. I'll give you the PowerPoint so you can take a look at it, just to give you an overall idea. The Better Bennington Corporation is partially funded by the Downtown Improvement District, otherwise known as the DID, with an incremental tax, hence the select board is part of our organizational chart. While we don't exactly report to the board, as a recipient of tax dollars, we do provide our financials, minutes, and director's report to the town on a monthly basis. The rest of the budget, it comes from donors, members, grants, sponsors, and some event income. The two events that bring in some income for BBC are Mayfest and the New Harvest Fest. The, hold on. If you're interested in becoming a member or donor or sponsor, please go to our website or feel free to email me at director@betterbennington.com. Building a larger board, our board, our bylaws ask for a board of fifteen to twenty. With COVID and the last year of management shifting, our membership, I mean, our board is down. So our board membership meeting and election is June seventeenth, and at that meeting, we do have, at this point, we would end up with fourteen on the board, there is one other person possibly putting their name on a ballot. At the membership meeting for the elections, you get one vote per business or one vote for family membership, and we will be doing absentee ballots for those who cannot come to the membership room. We couldn't do all the work without all our incredible volunteers. The docents returned this week, so the visitor's center is now partially reopened. We are in searching for new docents, if anybody would like to greet visitors coming to downtown Bennington. We only have five at the moment, so we're open a half a day for the visitor's center on those days. We do close it when the docents are not there because with our small staff, we actually have a lot of work to do, especially Mayfest coming up and all of the Thursday Night Live, et cetera. So the visitor's center is one tiny part of what the Better Bennington Corporation For our committees, I'm not going to list what's on here, you can read that yourself. The biggest thing, I mean, the Riverwalk is a big deal, that we got the, we, the town, you, the town, and we, the BBC, who helped the town, got the downtown transportation grant to make the scoping that Michael McDonough, who is here somewhere, and his committee spent so much time on. The next piece of that is Phase Two, which they are working on art on the Riverwalk. So with the possibility of a mural on the side of Walgreens to start the walk, and the committee invited the Bennington Arts Council, the Vermont Arts Exchange, Bennington College, Bennington Museum, the Vermont Arts Council, and local artists to discuss possibilities of what that could look like. The Economic Vitality Committee is the latest thing that they are trying to work on, is creating a resource library for businesses, potential businesses, and we're hoping to partner with the Bennington Free Library. Surprise? We'll talk to you later about having all of the materials that we gather be at the library for people to use. The Promotions Committee, as described in the letter I sent to the select board, has recently grown. It used to just be the executive director and the president of the board, so now there's actually a pull-on committee, and they are in the middle of trying to figure out what exactly they are and what it looks like. And so the work plans didn't have them because we're sort of reimagining what that committee actually does. But the idea is that they will take on the role of workhorse of the organization committee and the board, and they'll take direction on what is needed by those two committees. The Organization Committee is made up of our officers, the president, the vice president, the treasurer, the secretary, and the chairs of the committees. One of the biggest things that we decided as the Organization Committee, well, they accepted the decision, is extending the downtown beyond what we're calling, what is called the DID. So all that means is there's a different membership structure for those in the extended downtown, where they pay to be members, but they get all the same attention as the DID, because there are a lot of, the downtown is really bigger than what that district is. They are also going to be working more on fundraising efforts, given that we have more events, and we don't get the Better Places Grant next year, so we're going to have to be raising money if we want to keep up the level of events that we have created for this year. Events, events, events. This is what we're trying to raise money so that we can keep up doing. Free events, let me point out, they're all free. When the board hired me to be the executive director, they were very clear that I'm super event-driven. I spent years as a Broadway stage manager and have a long career as an event manager, and I really believe that events do economically drive any kind of organization or town, as it is now, by bringing people to our downtown. That's the idea behind these events. It's not just to give a bunch of free parties, although that's a good part of it too, but the idea is to draw people downtown, make them realize how much our downtown is, how vibrant it is. We got our brand-new website up and running within the first couple of months of Kaia and myself taking these positions. The website was built by Ahmed Yazir, and Kaia really did most of the heavy lifting with it. I gave some direction of what I wanted to see where, but the design is all them, I can't take credit for it. It's beautiful, it's more for an external use than internal, so it is really for visitors and for people, locals, to find what we have downtown. I'm using what I'm calling the Tuesday Blasts to communicate directly with the downtown businesses rather than the website. I don't expect them to go to the website to find out what's going on. Our social media has all been rebranded. This is all Kaia, I take no credit for any of this. It's beautiful, check out our Instagram. What I'm doing is a monthly piece for the banner that's also being used as the blog and as part of our monthly newsletter that goes out to all subscribers via our website. Anyone can subscribe, just go to our website, betterbennington.com, and you can subscribe. I designed complex databases using software called FileManger Pro, so I have been working to streamline all of our documents, budgeting, people, donors, et cetera. This saves us money in paying for CRM software. Our old website did include CRM software that wasn't really utilized, so our new website and this makes for lowering that budget for those needs. Collaboration, this is for building, we are working to really continue building our relationships and discussing combining efforts for grant opportunities and that kind of thing. Just today, we lost one of our Thursday Night Live performers for June, but I spoke with Jennifer Jasper, so we will be replacing that with the BPAC Best Story Night. So we'll be taking, they do story night every month? Not sure. But so she's going to pull from all of the best stories, she's going to get some people who do the mock storytelling, and it's going to be a really cool evening, but that's, we'll be co-producing, which is a neat thing. We're also co-producing an event with the Vermont Arts Exchange. In August, Alex Torres is coming to town. Mayfest is back. We have four stages with nineteen unique performing groups. We have eighty-five vendors. We will be going rain or shine, it's going to not rain. Everybody, you're in charge. Please, no rain. We're not publishing this quite yet because the vendor location could change depending, like we just lost a vendor today. So this won't be published, but I do have a copy for all of you, the two of you have it, since the jeans are both volunteering. Thank you very much. I can't pass congratulating the president of our board, Susan Plaisson, for becoming the Woman of the Year at the first Chamber event for leadership, women in leadership. Kaia Kirk, my assistant, has won the Young Woman in Leadership Award, and Bill Clark, our amazing, do everything you need, jump at any second to be there for you, no matter if you're home or at work. He was awarded the Support Person of the Year from the Volunteer Fire Department. So I'm very proud of all of them, and give it to them all. And I just want to thank several of my board members for being here tonight. Finally, let's talk about the budget. If you go down, so this is the projected year, and then in the second column is the projected last year, and then the actual last year. Now, if you recall, last year, we didn't have Mayfest, so the actual and the projected are quite different, but largely because of that. We also lost our executive director in May of last year, so until I joined on in November, you know, he worked in interim, Michael was sitting in as an interim, but that affected the salary line. I want to address you to the, in red at the bottom, the security expense. That is the, because of the town event policy, we are required to pay police for all of our events. The cost for the police are forty-five dollars an hour with a three-hour minimum, and then we determine together how many offices are needed for each event. So you'll see that's a significant addition, that's seven thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars that we didn't budget for last year. So I had to put that into the budget this year. We also, we won't be able to use Better Places Grant money for security or marketing, that's not allowed. So I have to rely on sponsors for that additional money. Thursday Night Live alone is two thousand six hundred and ten dollars for the officer that is required. We only have one for three hours. The budget for Thursday Night Live is at least eighteen thousand dollars. So while we raised ten thousand, I mean, while we raised five thousand dollars for the ten thousand dollar match, we had to have sponsors to be able to top that off, and especially because we can't use, like, as I said, we can't use it for marketing or security. The other major difference in cost of events is that we are making efforts to pay all of our musicians, and that hasn't been done in the past. And as an executive director of a not-for-profit who believes I should make a salary, I also believe that musicians who work playing music for a living should also be paid. I don't believe in giving your art away for free unless you choose to, and that's fine. I also volunteer to do other things as well. And we've also lowered expenses for the website and the marketing. Mayfest has a smaller amount of event income from prior years due to the new expenses of the security and the musicians. Harvest Fest will make up for that with a similar structure, however, just being aware that that is twice the effort by staff and volunteers. Now, questions?
Questions for the board? No questions? Okay. Questions from the community? Anyone in the public have a question for Jenny? Was I that bad? Wow. Okay, no, we're all sitting here in silence for a moment. Yeah, let's see. Yeah, I mean, you have explained it really well. Our events policy does require that we pay for security, and I think that makes sense. I do realize that's an extra expense for you, but it does make sense from my perspective. The board voted to do that, so. Are there, are there pinch points? Does this feel doable to you? Are there pinch points where you wish you could have asked for a million more or?
Of course. I mean, so the donations, grants, you know, projected last year, twenty-four thousand dollars, but I'm not sure where, how that projection came. Fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand was all we got. Eighteen thousand is, you know, going to be a stretch with not having access to the Better Places, but we'll try, you know, I'll try. There's a lot of work to do, but fundraising and grant writing can actually be a full-time job. So, I think that my job at the BBC is to do the work of the mission of the BBC, not raising money for my organization. But I will, I do that, and I will do that. But, yes, of course, I would love to double the ask from the DID and not have to spend all that time doing that, but I won't, you know, I understand the constraints, and I am asking for, you know, we're going from eighty-two to ninety, so, but that, most of that is the security. So, sponsorships, same thing, you know, we're, I'm asking, anyone want to give us money? Please do. And our donations were high because of doing the five, you know, getting the five thousand dollar match with Better Places. So, that took a lot of work, which we'll do again. I mean, we can still use patronicity and do crowdfunding for donations, which we will, it's just that we won't have a match to it. So, so I don't think, I mean, yes, my ask would be bigger if I felt. Well, and it does feel like, I mean, I, you know, I think your, your focus on collaborative efforts is also really wonderful, and I think that often is helpful in terms of joint fundraising or share costs or those sorts of things. Okay, so, yeah, but this feels, this feels doable, comfortable for you? In my six months of being here, I think so. It's my best estimate. Okay. Great. Nancy, you have a question? Come on up.
I guess I have to stop there. Is the BBC looking for money tonight?
Yes. So, in my opening comment, select word approves the BBC's budget, which is then funded through the Downtown Improvement District. Through a tax to the Downtown Improvement District, so yes.
They're looking for money from the people of Bennington?
No, they're not. They are looking for, for money from the members of the DID, which is the Downtown Improvement District. So, it is the businesses that make up the Downtown Improvement District.
Okay, so this isn't coming from the town budget?
It is not.
Okay, right, that's all I wanted to do, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, as I said at the very beginning, our budget comes from an incremental tax to the downtown, from the Downtown Improvement District, from grants, from membership, from donors, from sponsors. Your property taxes, unless you are a business owner in the downtown, are not affected by Better Bennington Corporation. Any other questions?
Can you?
Oh, yes. You, yes!
I just wanted to say that I was kind of surprised about how much that security expense was, and, I mean, these are events that we want to have happen in town, and what I'm, what I'm thinking about is other events that have happened in our town will also have to have that security.
If they have seventy-five people or more.
Seventy-five.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I actually, so that, I support this, but I think, that just, sorry, that raises concern for me with the security. Other events in town will not be coming to us, will likely mostly not be coming to us requesting funds.
Will they?
And that does put a big word on events. And this, this is an event that I'm going to highlight, so it is an event I'm going to recognize that. Request for the police budget this year, policing for my budget, or, sorry, so, I did write something up, but I'm just a little off right now. So, the future proposal I'm throwing this year, budget increases a little bit from between eight thousand dollars, which, when you're throwing an event in town as one or two people, your budget is fairly small, and, you know, you do want to make a little bit of profit, but this year, we're going to be having to pay out of pocket for that. So, it does, and, pride, as well, I don't know their budget particularly, but I don't think they're looking to make any money, and they might be having to be out of the pocket themselves.
So, so I'm going to say.
To make this, make me something that we might want to revisit.
Right, I think, yes, I think, let's put this, if we want to put the special events policy back on an agenda, we can. The question is, the question is always who pays. I'm looking at Stu. The question is always who pays, because if we have an event with seventy-five people or more, we want to have, we want to make sure that it's going to be a safe event. So, someone has to pay for it. And so, you know, I think it's, it's fine to put it back on, on a different agenda, but I think for right now, for right now, nothing's going to change with that. So, yeah, so I think it's, I think it's always interesting to see how policies play out, and this gives us something to think about.
I just want to see, you know, if we're funding the BBC, should we be funding other places as well?
We're not funding them.
Right, no, the town's not funding, but if they're being funded, should we?
They're being taxed, no, it's, it's very different, yeah, it's not, it's not even, the BBC receives part of their support through the DID, so that, whether that, whether it's the DID funding or whether it's their fundraising, they're, the BBC is having to pay this, they're not being supported by that.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, it's exactly the same for Brewfest or anyone else, I mean, it's, yeah. So, I think, I think the, the policy, let's, we can put that on a, we can put that on a future agenda.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we'll put that on a future agenda. I think for right now, though, the, the question is the budget for the BBC. Susan, as president of the BBC board, would you like to say something?
I just want to say that everything that the BBC is doing to create a more vibrant downtown, hopefully, our, our hope is that we'll bring more merchants to the downtown to lessen that impact to the DID.
Great, good point. Anyone else? Nancy, do you have another point?
I know for several years, our town budget was subsidizing the offices in the blacksmith shop. Are we still subsidizing those now?
Yes, we are, we subsidize the BBC's offices.
Is that like forty thousand dollars a year?
We own the building. We, we own the blacksmith shop. It is a town building, it's not social.
We don't, we don't charge them any rent, and, and when the board decided some years ago not to charge them rent, we were, we were actually receiving two hundred fifty dollars a month.
So, then, we are paying for the offices, the town, and don't we also pay for Mr. Clark's work in the downtown? Doesn't that come from the town budget?
We contract with the BBC for that work. It is, is a line item carried in the general fund, which is paid over to the BBC. Mr. Clark is an employee of the BBC.
But he's paying for it by our town budget?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, thanks.
But I do want to clarify, we own the blacksmith shop, the land and the building, and what we were doing is having BBC pay a very minimal amount of funding, which was just, it was like a wash.
And, no, they were actually paying rent.
Yeah. It's two hundred and fifty dollars a month. So, yeah, but it's a town building.
And we pay for our internet and all of those things.
You do.
That's something that we, that's in our budget. And the work that Bill does is really beneficial to both the BBC and the town, and we also share the building with, you have a tenant in there, the ACT is in there, and legal aid is in there with us as well. So, we don't, we don't have, we're not the building on our own. And the visitor's center is actually not really part of the BBC. It's not part of the twenty-three downtowns. It is overseen by us, but it, it's something that benefits the entire town.
All right, so, any other questions?
Just let me, just let me clarify. We pay a specific amount that goes to help fund Mr. Clark's efforts. The BBC does pay Social Security, additional funds on top of that, the tax, federal taxes. We only pay a very specific amount. It doesn't cover the entire.
Yes, he's covered under our liability. We pay for, we pay for the workers' comp, we pay for the payroll taxes.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you, Stu.
Any other questions? Board, community? No? All right, so, then, I would look for a motion to accept the BBC's budget for the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three year.
I, okay.
So, moved.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? No? Saying none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, so, next up is the second public hearing on land use regulations in town plan amendment. Dan is back up with us.
Okay. I'll just put this back up just to remind everybody. Okay, I'll do a real quick summary, because I went through all this last time, just a couple of weeks ago, so we'll go through the whole thing again. I will just remind everybody that we are here today, hopefully, for the second and final hearing regarding proposed zoning changes and minor amendments to the town plan for the Everestate property that formerly SBC campus. You will recall that the recent purchase by SVHC of the, of the former campus precipitated a closer look at the zoning to facilitate appropriate redevelopment of that property. Working, the planning commission working with SVHC and seeking community input has developed and proposed to you folks and recommends changes to the zoning to, to allow for that redevelopment or the facility redevelopment. Essentially, in a nutshell, the area of the SBC campus that is not currently within the forest district, traditionally, this area is, I would, most, most would consider a developed area, the mansion area, the gymnasium, dormitories, and some of the fields adjacent there too, would be rezoned to the Institutional Professional District, which is a district adjacent to, across the street from Harman Avenue, except the hospital it's actually currently in as well. That change incorporates lots and lots and lots of protections for historic integrity and senior resources of that property. As I stated before, and I feel very confident, this change, this property is protected more than any other property in town, and it has impacts on senior resources and historic integrity, so.
Look at your.
So, just to reiterate, this, these changes do encourage and facilitate redevelopment, but also include significant protections for senior resources and historic integrity for the property. As I mentioned, this is the second of two required hearings. If you folks are satisfied that you have the information you need to make a final decision this evening, after you close, after you close the hearing, you may do so, and it would simply be a resolution adopting both a vision to the town plan and the zoning bylaws or land use development regulations, as we call them. So, that is our request this evening. After we answer any questions you may have, I do have a couple of planning commission members here and a couple of folks from SVHC here, including Jason Larson, who represents the SVHC folks. So, if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those, but if you're satisfied with the information you have, it would be appropriate to close the hearing, and then we would ask you to adopt a resolution. So, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any, any additional questions from the board? No? Any questions from the public? Yes, please. You do. Kat Tanyan wants to hear you loud and clear. So, can you state your name and town of residence?
Hi, my name's Wayne Goodman. I live on Ridgewood Drive in Bennington, so I have a vested interest in this decision. Dan, the question I have, when I get off the podium, is if you can more specifically highlight the areas of, the area, the, the physical area that the zoning applies to, and that's actually for, for a person who lives near me who couldn't come in today. And the only other thing I have to say is pending what Dan has to say about the actual boundaries, Brian and I have had many conversations about this, I, the, most of the people in the community, everyone I know in the community near that, that development, fully support this being resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'll try to point out more in particular sense where the rezoning is. So, just to orient folks, this is the hospital campus right here. This whole area, and I guess you'd call it an orangish, brownish, is the SBC campus. This road is Mansion Drive. The mansion is at the top of that road. This is the pond on the campus that you'll see between, that you'll, that you see between the dormitories and the gymnasiums here. This, this line essentially follows closely the bridge, the tree line of the, of the fields that are above the gymnasium and adjacent to the, to the estate, the mansion. So, that area there is proposed to be changed to Institutional Professional District. And again, it encompasses what most people would consider the, the campus, and then the forest lands are up from that campus, and those are protected not only by zoning regulations, but also by the Vermont Land Trust's permanent restrictive covenants that conserve that land. So, does that answer your question?
What's the northern, what, what delineates the northern?
Which, Dan, do you repeat the question, since Wayne is not a public?
So, I think the question is what delineates northern boundary. So, the northern boundary is essentially the property line between the Fox Hill Development and the campus. It's the, it's the property line of the campus property or former campus property, the Everestate. Yep, so that is the northern boundary.
Okay. Bruce, you have a question?
Yes, Dan, it does, for everybody's clarity, you mentioned the forest land. That is totally off the docket for this. This does not affect that in any way whatsoever.
Absolutely not, and in fact, even if we wanted to, we couldn't.
Right.
Because like I said, the Vermont Land Trust has permanent conservation easements on all of that forest land. In fact, it does actually come down a little bit into the IP district, but it is absolutely one-hundred percent protected for perpetuity with the land trust.
Yep. Just wanted that for clarity.
Gary, you have a question?
Dan, the western boundary, you said it's loosely the road that goes through there, the tree line that goes through there?
Loosely, yeah. So, if you see, Gary just already, the end of this drive here is essentially the Everestate mansion, and so you can see that the line kind of goes diagonally towards the Fox Hill property. So, it essentially, it's roughly the whole, the field areas there, but like I mentioned to Bruce, it, the Vermont Land Trust's covenants actually encumber some, some of that property on that western boundary, so it's not, even though it's shown as IP district, it can't be developed in any significant way, in that extreme western boundary.
You feel it's, without having a specific, I mean, usually these follow a property line or something like that? I believe it follows a thirteen-hundred-foot contour.
It is a contour line, it is not a new line, it's the line between the, between the forest district and other districts, and it's, it's not been relocated.
Okay.
Yeah, so, to Bruce's point, the forest district remains a forest district within its existing boundaries. There are no changes proposed in the forest district boundary.
It's just the covenants that, for, from the land trust.
Yes.
That include part of what we would, would then, if we so choose, vote to make part of the IP.
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay, that's.
Other questions? Yes, Nancy, please come on.
I don't know if there's been any discussions about a, an end, a new entrance or exit from the property behind Manhattan. If there is in the future, who would that go in front of?
Yes, it would go, it would go before the Developer Review Board.
It would go where?
Development Review Board, the DRB. It's the, it's the body that approves developments for the town event.
Okay. And they are approving a subdivision tonight?
No, there's no subdivision being made. All we're changing is the land use regulations and the town plan. All we're changing is the land use regulations and the town planning document to allow this to become an institutional professional zone.
Okay, so to sell the mansion and a portion of land around it to a hotel, that doesn't need a subdivision?
That wouldn't, while it might require a subdivision, depending on how the developer would like to approach it, whether or not the owners of the property are willing to make that subdivision. But that is possible, but that would have to go before the developer review board. That would take a public hearing on approved permit application.
And after tonight, does everything still go in front of the zoning board?
The zoning board is now the developer review.
Okay.
We don't have a zoning board.
All right, well, so everything after tonight goes to the development review board, same as always?
Yes.
Okay, and Dan, in 2018, was this listed as rural residential? I didn't know it was before the zoning changes last year.
It's a combination of rural residential and rural conservation.
Dan, you're gonna have to get closer.
It's a combination of rural residential and rural conservation being proposed to change to IP. The lower portion was rural residential, below, essentially below Mansion Drive, above there was rural conservation.
So it's going to be rural residential below?
Well, for the last 30 years, I would have listened to that.
Perfect, other questions? From the board, from the public? No, all right, so then I should close this hearing and ask for a motion to approve the resolution to the land use regulations and town plan.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Gary, do you have this one?
That's fine.
So, all right. Any more discussion? No, all right, all, let's, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure that helps your system, thank you as well.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep, thanks, Jason.
And Dan. All right. Okay, and so, oh, Dan, you sat down.
Oh, I'm back already?
You're back, yes, aren't you? I'm losing my attention there. Yes. ARPA, Dan is here for an ARPA update.
Well, my favorite thing, so I just get my folks. So, I'm going to do a very brief update, then I'll answer any questions you have about ongoing projects that are using the ARPA funds. Now, all of these projects are projects you folks have promptly approved and asked that to pursue. So we're doing that, and we're doing that with all diligence. So, I think, I'll start with just the quick and easy ones, because I think that all the questions I've asked. With regard to the County Street Benmont Avenue sewer line upgrade design, documentation of existing conditions has concluded and designed up and the upgrades have begun. That project will wrap up probably fairly soon, and then we can seek funding for that from other sources. We do not anticipate using ARPA funds for the actual implementation, but we want to be, we hope, shovel-ready for any infrastructure funds that come along. Very similar situation with the South Street Union Street stormwater study. Everybody knows about ponding, to put it mildly, that happens in front of the town office when it rains heavily, which it seems to be more and more based, but doesn't just seem to the data says it does. So we have engaged an engineering firm to install monitoring equipment to understand what's happening there as far as how quickly the water is entering the system, how much volume there is, et cetera. So that those existing conditions can be documented. And once that data is collected, it will be analyzed and alternatives for improvements will be developed and evaluated, discussed with this board, and then we will hopefully be able to find funding sources to implement that. Though any solution there, which I think we all have to expect will not be a cheap one, but it is something that has been happening for a long time from now with greater frequency, so it does have to be addressed. The other project that's ongoing, minor, I'll call it minor, because it's not the same amount of money as we're talking about with the three bigger projects that I'm going to talk about, is the digitization of the town land records. It has begun, every town land record recorded after April 15th is now online. Every land record going forward will be online, which is really cool. And we, the work to digitize 40 years of previous records will begin, I'm told, this summer, and those should be online this fall or winter. So, it's all great, and that means we're entering 21st century, growing our land records, it's awesome. All right, so now for the big three, I'll call them. Start with, I'll start with the skate park, because I totally love the skate park. So, I am working with the architect who's been retained, I say retained, he's doing a co-bono. So I guess he's still retained, but he's actually not getting paid. Jeff Mattath, he was here to talk about the skate park when we initially brought it to the board. He's working with our private partners to put together a conceptual design, a schematic design, and come up with a cost estimate. He hopes to have that within the next couple of weeks. And when that is available, we'll be back with the schematic design and the cost estimate to talk about ways forward, how we will, how we'll start to put together what a partnership will look like with our, with that private partner to, to proceed with the skate park, which is really exciting. And according to Jeff, he's already got some really good ideas and some really good conceptual plans that he's eager to finalize and share in that, in that next meeting, which we hope will be in two weeks, but it may be. Okay, our two projects, or big projects, Willow Park. So Jonah's been taking, Jonah has been taking the lead on the public involvement on this, and obviously Paul Dance, our buildings and grounds, our facilities director, has been taking the lead on actual implementation of the design. Do you have a little bit of inaccurate, a little bit of inaccurate information in your, in your memos that both Jonah and I made? We had anticipated, being able to say that we did have. The presentation of the final playground designs last Thursday, unfortunately, there was illness from the designer, so we were not able to do that. But that presentation of the final design will occur, and we expect to hold that just before the ground breaking happens in, let's say, late June, early July, we're hoping. But again, we're waiting to find out exactly when the equipment will arrive. But as you know, we have to first demolish the existing structures, and then we'll be building, our consultants will be building the, the final design. You remember, you, you will recall that Jonah and Shannon headed up a public outreach process. Jonah has noted here that over 1,500 people participated in the selection process and submitted comments and suggestions. And actually, we were able to incorporate several of those comments and suggestions, including some addition of musical and auditory components, some more accessible structures. And, and one that we all pushed for, the staff club, was a bigger, cooler slide, so that is also a project as well. So, that's going, it's going very well, probably the project is going most smoothly. We were real happy with our design consultant, and if we get the equipment, what they say we will, we'll have this, we'll have our brand-new Willow Park playgrounds, because it is two playgrounds up there, two separate playgrounds, in place, hopefully, by the end of the summer. If not earlier, we don't want to overpromise. So Willow Park is really progressive, very nice, and we're very happy with the way that process is proceeding. All right, now for the biggest and most complex one that we are working on, Ben High. And I did give you kind of a preview earlier about where we're at, but I will kind of reiterate. So in April, the town took possession of the Ben High building pursuant to our lease and option agreement that you folks approved. And we also have, after reviewing proposals from design professionals, we have selected Goldstone Architecture to perform feasibility study in designing construction administration services for the, for the portion of the property that will be redeveloped by the town. Now remember, it's a 100,000 square foot building. The town is hoping to redevelop 30,000 square feet of that, which includes, among other things, with regard to promote its uses, and again, all subject to feasibility and final design. But as of now, the thought is to house the Senior Center, Meals on Wheels, have a new refurbished gymnasium, and various workshops and offices for nonprofits and other entities that we would like to promote in the community. With that much square footage, we get some flexibility, which we don't have now, which is really, really nice. So Goldstone Architecture has already begun to work on the feasibility study, and that feasibility study will have a schematic design and cost estimate, which will all come back to you folks before we go to the next step, which will be design and construction. But it's all obviously dependent on where we come out with the schematic design and the cost estimate. And I will mention that the Goldstone Architecture, along with Shannon, will be, Shannon is our site, we're community development director, we'll be reaching out to all of our partners, Meals on Wheels, Senior Center, the YNCA, et cetera, to have meetings with the architects to go over program needs and wants. And we'll be, between the feasibility study, we understand what everybody is looking for with regard to our partners in that building. So that is ongoing, and if you're, if you're with one of those organizations, running one of those organizations, you'll be getting a call if you haven't already from Shannon to set that up. And after those initial meetings and after some initial program, information is gathered and some initial schematic designs are created, there will be larger, more inclusive meetings with other, with users, proposed users, community members, et cetera. But that first round, working with the professionals who operate organizations, is happening now or will happen in the next couple of weeks. Some really good news that I was able to share with a few of you a couple of weeks ago, but I can share now publicly. We have begun our environmental due diligence regarding the building, which is always what I consider the scariest part of development projects, because there's always seems to be people getting in, hiding in the ways with regard to environmental issues. We tested for what we consider the contaminant of most concern. We tested, did 11 air tests throughout the building for PCBs, and I'm frankly shocked and amazed and overwhelmed and happy about this, but all 11 came back as non-detect, which means there was zero detection of PCBs in there, which is a huge relief. We can pretty much deal, know how to deal with asbestos and VOCs and that kind of stuff, and you can, it's relatively easy to deal with. PCBs are a whole different story, so we feel really good going into the continuums of our due diligence, which we will coordinate with Shire's Housing, environmental diligence, that we can handle. The environmental issue is probably not going to be something that will stop this project. There may be other issues that come up, but we feel pretty good that, as of right now, it's looking like the environmental issues will be manageable. That goes, as I mentioned, we are coordinating with Shire's on the environmental testing, and we're coordinating with Shire's on the rest of the, the rest of the elements of the project as well. They have retained a design professional. They will be, if they haven't already, retained an environmental consultant and a historic preservation consultant to begin their due diligence, which is much more extensive than what we will have to do, given their funding sources. So they, they have already begun that process, and we will be coordinating every step of the way, and it's been great working with Stephanie on this project. And I look forward to continuing that partnership and going, getting to the finish line together on that. I guess that's a quick summary, I'm happy to answer any questions, there's lots of things going on, we're moving as quickly as we can, we have a very, doesn't sound like a short deadline, but it is. We need to have that building up and ready by late summer of 2023 at the latest, in order to make the project work as we, as we see it going forward under our lease and option agreement. So we're moving as quickly as we can to do the feasibility study and move toward a design and then go straight to construction, all with the help of finishing the major components of the, of the Senior Center, Meals on Wheels, et cetera, by June or July of 2023. So that is our, we're working back from there, it means we have to go pretty quickly, so that's what we're doing.
Fantastic, that's a great overview, thank you.
So any questions, if I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Yes, you have that look on your face.
One question, so did you say we're taking County Street, Benmont Avenue, and South Street, Union Street off the list at this point?
Well, I don't, they're not off the list, we did agree to fund the design and analysis, so that's, that's what you guys authorized. So they stay on the list, but I don't want anybody to expect or anticipate that those will be, that the construction portion will not be funded. The idea was to get these to shovel-ready, so when the federal infrastructure money does become available, which we haven't seen any of that come to the town yet as far as rate applications, et cetera, but we do expect that soon, we'll have projects that are ready to go. And we can, we can seek those funds, and hopefully be at the top tier of receiving those funds.
Thanks. Great, thank you. Any other questions, yes?
I'm forgetting, and I'm kind of embarrassed to say this, but as far as the housing portion of Ben High, Shire's is developing the Pleasant Street side, is that correct?
So right now, Shire's is, well, they are doing that, but let's, maybe I can, so there's, let's reiterate, it's a 100,000 square foot building. 30,000 square feet is what's anticipated the town will redevelop, and that includes the gymnasium, locker rooms, bathrooms around that, all that rear of the, of the building. It also includes the first floor of what we'll call the newer addition, which has the auditorium space, some classrooms, lots of workshops on the Pleasant Street, called workshops, that's hard thinking, but the older shop rooms, et cetera, on the Pleasant Street side of the first story of that addition. That's all included in that 30,000 square feet that the town is anticipating redeveloping, which a schematic design will come back to you with a cost estimate. The balance of the building, which is 70,000 square feet, which is upper story of the newer addition, and almost the entire portion of the older building, is being looked at, just like us, Shire's is to do feasibility study. So they are looking at the feasibility of developing that entire balance.
Okay, that's what I wasn't clear about.
We have been in discussions in the past, and it may be that we end up there, that there may be other partners involved to build out the balance.
Okay.
But if Shire's is able to pull down all the funding to make this happen as soon as possible, then our advice will be to you folks is to proceed with Shire's for the balance of the project.
Okay.
We understand, although there is an incredible amount of additional money that is going into housing. These, one of the, a couple of the major funding sources have already told Shire's, you better apply this fall or earlier than early winter, or it's all going to be gone. Also, there are massive amount of housing projects in the state in the pipeline, and we have to race to be near the front of the lines, and we are eligible for this one. So not only are we racing forward, but Shire's is too. This is, we're going to work really hard to get the information to you folks and the public, so we can make those decisions about whether we proceed as soon as possible.
Thanks.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Yes, please do. Yeah, you have to make the walk too. It's possible to sit closer to the public, but you want to note that. This is in Manhattan, was the building tested for mold?
So mold is an interesting topic. So mold exists in every single environment, every single corner of, of, of where we live and work. So what we will do as part of our due diligence is make sure there's no harmful molds in there, which are very, very minimal amount harmful molds, that are truly harmful to everyone. They have an allergy to molds, that, you know, that's, that's certainly an issue. But what will happen is we, as we dry out the building and get the building closer to occupancy, we will make sure that there is no mold or building or anything in the building that would negatively impact those. So there will be air testing at that time, but if we test it now, we'll say, yep, there's mold, because you can test this building and any building in this town, and there would be mold, but we want to make sure the level is not at a, at a point that would cause respiratory distress to people.
And I'm assuming there'll be some HVAC work being done as well?
Well, that's the thing, right now, there's nothing, and so it's just, it's essentially almost like being outdoors. So it's more mold outdoors usually than it is inside. So we will be putting brand-new, state-of-the-art HVAC and air ventilation. So we will put in brand-new, state-of-the-art HVAC and air ventilation systems, which will very likely be better air quality than almost any building that was built decades ago.
Thanks for the question. Wayne, you have a question?
I do have a question. Wayne Goodman, Bennington. So Dan, the question I have is, you were describing the town's involvement and Stephanie's, Shire Housing's involvement. What would it look like if the scenario were that one or the other of you gets to the finish line of the funding, but we both, or one or the other of you?
So Wayne, you have to speak into the microphone personally.
So in the case of either Shire Housing or the town not getting their funding, how would that affect the outcome of this entire project? I guess what I'm asking is, if one or the other loses funding, is it a dead project or can they both exist separately?
Got it.
Excellent question. Excellent question. The moment can't answer this yet because we're doing our feasibility studies. But I will say that if our project is feasible, there are other options for us to proceed other than Shire's. But they are probably the one that has access to the quickest amount of money and the most amount of money to rent, develop the balance of them. What will happen after the feasibility study is we will have a really good idea about what funding sources will be available and how likely they are to be awarded. In our case, we already have more than half of the project funded with ARBA funds. So we don't have a timeline or a deadline for the balance of the project. So if it takes us a year or two to get the balance of the funding, to finish up the gymnasium, the locker rooms, bathrooms in that facility, we can take that time and, you know, take that as a phase project. But if for some reason Shire's decides that this is well beyond a project that they can get funded, then that will definitely be something we have to look at before we give the final go-ahead on the project, which is all why we're all doing our feasibility studies at the same time. So we have all the information we need to make an informed decision about whether or not we're going to proceed. But the good thing is, we do have at least two other partners that would like to work with us on this project and may end up working with us even if Shire's decides they want to do the project. They may, Shire's may say, you know what, we can make this happen right away, but if you have another partner that can do the other portion in a short period of time and proceed with that. So what it looks like at the final hour is all going to depend a lot of the feasibility studies that we're doing right now.
And I do think also the amount of work that you and Shannon did at the front end of just talking with people and making sure that there were good, there was real interest and real partners and just thinking that through, I think has made this, has made this a really good, exciting project to go forward and I think something that Bennington will be very proud of. So Wayne, we have our fingers crossed on all of these things. Other questions? Nancy, please, come on.
In Stu's letter, I read the 4.1 million. Is that for the 30,000 square feet?
Yes.
Well, then how do you have it half-funded if you're using 1.1 in ARBA? Do you have grant money already set up or tax credits?
So we are, we are proposing the possibility of up to $2 million to fund the half of the project that we'd like to do initially, which is Meals on Wheels, Senior Center, that area, which also significant building envelope improvements, systems like HVAC and ventilation and electrical plumbing and all of that. So that's the proposal. That's what the select board had authorized us to assume as we proceed. Obviously, none of that money can be spent without the formal approval of the select board.
So it would be up to 2 million in ARBA then?
Depending on what these costs are.
Okay. If Shire's has to take on a partner, who will the partner be?
I don't. That partner would be our partner, not Shire's partner. It would be a partnership between all three folks overall.
Okay. So it's 18 months. If money is needed at the local level, will that all be ARBA money, none of our town budget money?
That's correct.
Right. Where do you vote in our budget?
I don't know. And if we're doing all of this local money for these county and regional nonprofits, why aren't you asking other towns to help kick in some of their ARBA money to help us?
So Nancy, again, I think we're striving, you've asked these questions repeatedly and they've been answered to our best abilities. I believe at this point, it is a private conversation you're wanting to have rather than a public conversation.
Jeannie, I read in the contract that when it's done, you want it to be a community center. It's going to be a local town of Bennington community center.
The Senior Center is already a community center. We already voted, I think, two years ago not to charge non-residents to use our Senior Center because we wanted it to be community. Meals on Wheels is a community-based program. It serves the entire county. These are not, what we're discussing right now are an update on our ARBA priorities, which we're really happy to get. Nancy, it is not a time for you to reiterate every concern you have when your questions are being answered.
I don't want the town of Bennington to pay all the bills for the town's end account.
Nancy, that is not the topic. It's not the topic.
Well, it should maybe because it affects us.
I am going to have to call you out of order if you continue.
I wish, I wish you could just put some focus on local rather than worrying about the county and the region.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dan? Please, come on up.
Have all of the ARBA funds been allocated? Are there any left for possible cameras around now?
So they have been all allocated and one of the things that Jonah did, oh, when we voted on the top priorities to go forward with is, oh, beautiful, show it to Jen, or Deb. I was going to say, if you go on the camera. If you go on our website, that excellent graphic right there is available with explanation that shows the projects that we gave highest priority to, we voted on, and the five projects essentially use the 3.9 million. Some of it, some of those projects are just doing the feasibility, looking for other funds. All of the projects require additional funding beyond ARBA. So, except for the digitization of the town records. So that has been available for several months and we will update it as we get more information. All right. Any other questions? No? All right. So then let's move on. Thank you, Dan. That was, that was really excellent. Let's move on to implementing the town vision. Agenda item 10. We're nearing the end. So a couple of things. So first, the CPAR training schedule, which is the Community Police Advisory Review Board training. There are two things here. There is a suggested overall training schedule and then there is also a contract to work with Brian Core, who worked with the task force on doing several, several training. Bruce, Gene and I have worked with Chief Doucette and Lieutenant Grandy, as well as town staff on putting together the training schedule. It is, I will say, much more extensive than any of the other towns that we've looked at, both in-state and out-of-state, and also other agencies that have review boards. But it feels to us like this is comprehensive and will give the CPAR a lot of information upfront so that they can be, they can hit the ground running. And it includes continued training over time, particularly on topics that are of interest to CPAR and the Bennington, with the Bennington Police Department. So that will be an ongoing effort and I think, I'm personally really happy with the way this is turned out. It feels, it feels like we're giving this board the training they need to be able to do what we want them to do. The scope of work for Brian, there is a small error in it that I just wanted to mention on the first paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth line. He's doing two full-day sessions and one in-person evening session rather than two. And also including four hours of consultation, which would largely be with the CPAR, anything that they wanted to talk with him about. We changed the scope of work from four sessions to three sessions because we felt, given where the legislature is on, on looking at review boards across the state, it's going to make a lot more sense for the town council to talk with the select board and the CPAR about review functions, which still belong with us at this point, but at some point it will probably move to, to a function of the CPAR. So that's what I'm anxious. So, so I'm opening it up for discussion. Any, any questions, comments on, on either the training schedule or the scope of work with Brian?
Yeah, so there are four of these dates that are select board dates that I'm working. Are these dates that we're able to switch or?
No. So these dates were set largely, we set these in consultation with the partners. So they are set and we are, they will be available to all of the applicants. So the dates, the dates are set Thursdays. We also had to look at fire department. We also had to look at room availability, when there were no other meetings happening, all of those things. So unfortunately, the dates are set.
Will they be available to you?
Say yes.
Will they be available to you?
To view?
Yeah.
Some of these trainings are open, some of these trainings are not.
Would they be available to you for select board members?
We will not preempt them.
Yeah.
Yeah. They'll be closed.
I see.
With the exception of the open meeting law, open records, which? Which that will be an open, yeah, that'll be an open meeting. So that, the community will be invited to attend that as well because it's good for all of us to understand open meeting law and open records law. Other questions?
Yes, Jim.
So in that case. You said? Okay. So in that case, could we have, so the only thing we need to vote on is the scope of work for Brian so that we can hire him. So could I have, I guess I would be looking for a motion. Yes. Oh, yes, please. Come on. Oh, of course. Yes.
Yes.
As Taurus, you've been coming for this moment, sorry. And you have.
I forgot. Sorry. It's getting wet.
Taurus is real hard for Bennington. And I can't wait to questions and now I've got two and a half, I guess. One question was on the timeline that was in your packet. I didn't see when the appointments were going to be made to CPAR.
Oh, so the, so, sorry. It is, we are doing interviews next Tuesday and Thursday, and it sounds like there are a couple of interviews that will go into the following week.
Okay.
Yeah, Tuesday, Thursday, as in tomorrow and Thursday. And then some will go into next week. We will need to make the appointments at our next select board meeting and it will be a slate with all the boards and commissions.
Okay. Because I, and I think a lot of other people are curious if you really did get between five and seven letters of interest.
Well, so we're not going to give you numbers, but yes.
Enough.
The short answer is yes, we've gotten enough.
Enough. Yes. Good. Then the second question, which is now a half question, in terms of the state wondering what the path forward is, because you were talking about maybe a charter change and maybe a statewide, because there are so many communities that are faced with the same thing of how much the select board will delegate or can delegate.
So we have not gotten any guidance and I suspect part of that is because, as you know, Senator Jeanette White is not running for reelection. So I, so we've not gotten any guidance on that and I don't know if we're going to get any until closer to the next session. Our, our thinking though is that both the CPAR and the select board will get the, what we see, training. And then as we move forward, whoever, whoever has that authority will use it. In terms of, you know, we'll just have to keep pursuing, you know, what the best course of action. VLCT, I mean, I think as I said before, VLCT has indicated that they think that it makes sense for the legislature to stop making town-by-town decisions. It's a slow process to do that so that if there is a precedent, which there is, Burlington has already gotten approval to have a review board, which they call their police commission, that then that be opened up to other communities rather than having to make each community go in and do that.
Which could potentially shorten the amount of time, as Jim had pointed out, it's a very long process.
Oh, it absolutely would.
To do it individually.
I guess we would need to do a town, yes, we need to do a town board and then we need to have a legislature.
Okay. Well, so there's a path inching forward.
There are two paths forward. We just don't know what, you know, I would prefer the legislature.
And then my third question, which when Sarah talked about a ability to view, if it could be known, made known in advance, which ones can be viewed by the public and whether somebody would want to come down, is it going to be recorded or whether it's live streamed so that you could see it then?
Yeah. So the, the, in terms of building, I don't know, rapport on the board, the, I think the hope is that the, some of the board trainings will be just, will be just for the board and associated individuals. We definitely know, I, my understanding is that the only one that will be public would be the open meeting law, open records law, trained with Merrill.
Well, if, if the upcoming paid for the particular one could be made known so that those who would like to could plan for it.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for getting this so far.
I'm so sorry I couldn't see your camera. All right. Any other questions? I'm going to blow on that one. No? Okay. So then I would still be looking for a motion to accept the scope of work proposal from Brian Core.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Please say no. Any extensions? All right. Thank you. All right. So great. All right. So then other things coming up, just want to let everyone know that Gene, Tom and I, Paul Dancerow from the town and folks from Vermont Center for Independent Living will be meeting this week to talk further about the ABA transition plan, which is great. And because we haven't talked about this, I can't say this is on behalf of the board, but I think you'll shake your head. Yes. I want to offer my wholehearted thanks to Senator Dick Sears and I would guess that the full board and the community also would, for really sticking with making sure that Bennington got the pathways, Vermont, funding for housing first, Christmas or Thursday. This will serve 30 chronically homeless individuals in our community for as long as they need support. And I was told that Dick actually sat in the room during the budget negotiations and did not leave until our portion of the bill was passed. So that's really thank you, thank you, thank you to Senator Sears. All right, do you have any update on Juneteenth or...?
No.
Okay.
It was just really down to details of planning the Juneteenth event, which is, let me just reiterate, June 18th from 12:00 to 3:00 at the Middle School.
Great, all right. And then the other thing that we have under... Well, I think we already covered board, commission, and review schedule. It's Tuesday and Thursday, and maybe a view next week. The last piece is projects and initiatives. We started talking about this last week, just thinking about, in the upcoming year, what are some of the things that this Select Board should really be focusing attention on? And last meeting, we mentioned pedestrian and bike pathways, more information on housing stock and proactive measures we could take to increase housing availability, and also making sure that we offer both focus and support on recovery housing. I'll start... I'll just open it up. Any other topics that we want to make sure that we do not let escape us this year that have a really high priority? Yeah, go ahead.
I think it was great to have Rory in here for the Department of Health, and just keeping an eye on our community health. When I was running for Select Board, I talked to someone from the opioid response team. And I think tying back in with that would make good sense in the next year.
Okay, great. Okay, and they are trying to schedule a time to come in and talk. So that's really timely. Great, so community health overall, and in particular the work of the task force. Work, okay. Anyone else? You still mind you? Well, since we're all going to work on it, that's a good thing.
That's what I was going to say, too.
Okay. Any other things that we want to...
I just want to add a little bit more to what Garrett said. My concern is an opioid treatment center here in Bennington. I think that is critical. Because right now, as many may or may not know, for people to get their Suboxone treatment, they have to either go to Rutland or Williamstown. And it has to be done early in the morning. And, you know, for a lot of people, if you want to work, it makes it difficult to hold a job to get treatment. So if we could have a dispensary here in Bennington, either through the UCS or the hospital, you know, we could do a lot of good for those people who want to stay clean and sober.
All right, well, we'll make sure that when the task force comes and talks with us, that that is something that they address. So that's good. Other thoughts?
I'll just chime in briefly. I'm always a pretty brief... So I think we have a lot of great ideas on the board, and I think just continue to be really good community partners, and none of us will be siloed. It's just that...
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, and I think we've worked really hard not to be siloed, which is, I think... It takes a lot of energy.
Continue to do that and keep doing that anymore.
Great, okay, perfect. All right, well, and I think, yeah, I think we have a lot going on now, and we have to be careful what we add to it. But I think these are all important items. So that's wonderful. All right, so then let's move on to the manager's report.
All right. I have one action item and one contemplative action item. The first is the highway equipment borrowing. This is pretty much a standard practice. The voters have approved the budgets. We purchase by borrowing most of our large pieces of equipment. And there are documents that this board needs to approve and sign. So I'm asking the board to, via motion, to waive the reading of the resolution, approve it, sign the tax certificate, and the note. And I have all of those to circulate for your signatures. Board signatures are required on all of them, but it needs to be done by motion. The amount we are borrowing this year is $91,185 to purchase a Skid steer and a one-time pickup truck. So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussions? No? All right.
I just think we should just point out that this is the amount the voters already approved. That's absolutely... And this is not for anyone that had questions about that.
Thank you, Tom. Good. All right, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great, thank you. You all signed.
The second is a... It's a question that I have, and it's been proposed to me by others. If you recall, when the state of Vermont decided to light the monument to, in a sense, support and honor Ukraine, I believe it had a deadline of May 26th. And there are some, including me, who would like to see that lighting continue beyond that time as long as this war between Ukraine and Russia continues. And the question to you is, would the board support a letter to the governor's office asking that that deadline be extended?
Yeah.
I'd like to authorize the manager, Tom, to write a letter of support.
Okay, I'd like to just add a little bit to it.
Could someone second that?
Second, second. Discussion.
All right.
I'd like to, Stu, if we're able to do it, and I think we can't imagine why we couldn't do it, have every board member sign that letter, as well as our Bennington delegation, and then send it to the governor. And include the chairman of the Old Bennington Board of Trustees, because that was one of the things that Laura Trichman had claimed, is that, you know, it was going to be difficult to bring all these people together. And as Phil Pappas, myself, and Mary Morris demonstrated, we were able to do that. And that will... Because Laura Trichman is, I will predict, is going to come up with objections along those same lines. And if we have all of our legislators, and the chairman of the Board of Trustees from Old Bennington, and the entire Select Board, I think that would go a long way to helping get that done.
Do we need to have the letter? If they're going to turn the lights off on the 26th, which is three days from now, do we need to get that letter to the governor before then?
Good question. I would love to be able to do that. Of course, as you all know, I'm not at work this week. So I think what I will do is talk to my staff about getting something put together, and at least contact their delegation and the Old Bennington trustees to at least get some sort of referral to do so.
Yeah, but we could sign on their behalf instead of...
Or just list our names.
Could do that, too.
Yeah.
Do we need to pick a new deadline?
No, the state does that.
The state, we don't need to worry about it. I don't either.
Well, if your letter is... If the letter is going to say...
Indefinitely or...
Extend until the conclusion.
Till the end of the conference.
Right. Whatever that is.
All right, so did we vote on this?
No.
Shall we? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you, Stu. So you're going to take care of it, right?
Yes, I'll work with my staff to get something pulled together.
Excellent, okay. All right, anything else on the manager's report?
Nothing else.
All right.
Could I speak to... Could I have something to say to you, Stuart? I've been trying to do it for quite a while.
I'm listening.
You have to go to the podium.
As Fraser would say.
I'm Rose Telford, I live in North Bennington. I went to see you the other day, but you were out at your office. And I went to speak to you about... A couple weeks ago, I was walking into the recreation center, and a guy approached me coming from here. I don't recall who he was, I heard around the corner, I don't know. He asked me, he said, "Could I have money now so I can get something to eat for my daughter?" And I said, "Is this going to be an ongoing thing?" I mean, I was almost in the office, or almost into the door. That's a little bit ridiculous, and it's getting worse. You did so you feel you're not even... What do I want to say? Safe.
Understood.
And it's happened more and more. I stopped walking a lot because of that. And I just said, "Hey," I said, "I would say you said, 'I have money to give.'" I wanted to say, "Give a job." But I also know you could handle gun or a knife, seriously.
No, you're absolutely right, Rose. There is a... We have a panhandling ordinance that's working, it's it. You are correct, and your response was perfect. You don't have the money, and just keep on walking. I will let the police department know. They were here earlier. And if this is happening around the recreation center, we'll take some action.
I used to walk a lot more, you know, up and down the streets because I love the water.
Well, now you've got that little scooter that you can zoom around town.
Can I ask you another question? It's... While you're discussing, I don't understand what all the push is about the money on the monument. I think it's money, but... I also have a problem with all this stuff going on burning people over here because of what I'm for, right? The state is, so be it. I don't feel good about that. I don't think we should be burning people in here. Who knows what they have? And it's not our problem. Nobody comes here, or asks you, like we do. I think you guys stop helping with some of them. And I would be the first one that would help anybody. But this is...
You said you wouldn't.
I can see things that should be done here for people who are...
What would you do?
Well, I'm going to just stop you right there. So I just want to say in the future...
She stabbed me, and she wouldn't let me talk. Four months at least. Why not? She didn't even know what I had to talk. That's why I wanted that I asked you about that. I said, "If you sit there..." And you're not allowed to talk, there's something wrong with that. And I kept my mouth shut.
I know that wasn't a question actually directed to me, but Rose, I respectfully disagree with your position.
I hope because I think there's things that can be done for people who are here. And this seems to take pressure from me. Who paid, where do they live, and who paid for it? I don't think... I mean, I don't think...
I don't think... I look to the chair to end this discussion.
Yes, I would prefer that public comment be your public comment. I would. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.